Welcome to the February Planning Board Meeting for the Village of Bronxville. Thanks everyone on the board and in the audience for coming out tonight. I'm Michael Goldman, and it's good to have everyone here. The first order of business is our minutes from the December meeting. We didn't have a January meeting, but the December minutes, I think, went out to everyone. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the minutes? If not, would someone like to move them?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, terrific. The first item we have is the site plan for Under Hills Crossing. I guess, Mary Ann, you're going to speak for the applicant.
Hi, I'm Maggie Marrone, the architect for Stephen Palm at Under Hills Crossing. Stephen would like to replace all the French doors that are there now. There's currently two sets of French doors with a post in the middle and the wood panels above. And he'd like to make it higher doors, eight-foot doors, and glass panels above. There's a very high ceiling in Under Hills. And just really, he's trying to get a kind of a French feel. It'll be a black anodized aluminum trim, which I have a sample of. I don't know if you want to look at it up close?
Sure. Why don't you start with the architect that we have up here? We'll let you get back there. Don't trip, please.
So there'll be divided lights and arches in the panel. The doors are going to be completely opening, folding doors, so that he can get a full, open space in nice weather to the outside. And he's also going to replace the door on the inside of the little entryway and the panels above. So the entire thing will be, basically, from where the awning is now, down will be replaced.
And that awning is unchanged, right?
The awning is, for now, it's unchanged. I mean, if it's replaced, it'll be something very similar, the same thing.
Okay, thanks.
The lighting, those light fixtures are remaining. He'll add some new light fixtures. Right now, he's got some uplights, but he's going to put some downlights way up high under the awning, kind of, if you're not going to see it. And really, that's, it'll just give it a lot more light inside. And he's trying to get across, just have people be able to look in and out more easily, basically.
There's a bit of a gap. You have to step up where that...
It's like a, yeah, it's like a two-inch space. That has to stay, yeah.
I would trip over that.
Well, people aren't really going to be using it to go walk in and out. They're just using it more to have it open and have tables there. It's not going to be where people are walking.
Now, I'm recalling that you went before design review. I'm with this. If you could maybe summarize what took place at that meeting?
Basically, they were in favor of what we were doing. They thought the material is now, you know, it's something that's not going to, it will last for a long time. Instead of the wood, it has to be constantly maintained. And there wasn't really too much feedback.
Uh-huh. Jim, sometimes you're there. I didn't know if you attended design review this time.
I didn't, but I got the minutes. And the three things that were noted in the minutes that were sort of conditions of approval are all things that are contained in the plans, right? The fact that we've got anodized aluminum, the hardware's going to remain brass, and that the single-pane doors will be changed to a six-panel door. So this is consistent with what design review envisioned or discussed.
The other quick question I'd have is just for Kevin or Christina. An application like this, that's a smaller change, why do they have to come before us for this? It's the frontage, it's...
Any change to any commercial exit tiers or building has to be had.
Okay, that's just good to understand. Other questions from the board before we put this up for the public comment portion?
Maggie, is this thickness going to be all the glass?
No, that's not the glass. That's just to hold it together.
That's crazy.
It's going to be regular glass.
Regular glass, like...
I mean, it'll be tempered glass, but it's not going to be like that.
And they're going to fold so you can have in the summertime tables...
Yeah, completely opening.
Just a little bit out?
Yeah. And they're going to fold in. Yeah.
In terms of the acoustics, with the additional glass on top, does that change? Because you also do live music, piano right in front.
Um...
It's anticipated to be net neutral in terms of that? Because I was going the same place you were with the glass. Is it this type of glass? Is it triple-pane? Is it...
It's insulated glass?
Yeah, double-pane.
Double-pane insulated glass, which is standard for exterior door.
Tempered glass, yeah.
Are you ready for study on that? See what I'm not, the sound barrier at the interior here? You know that exterior...
Some of us like when the piano music spills onto the sidewalk, just saying. Yeah. So with that, if you don't have other comments here, why don't we open up the public meeting? Just see if anyone from the public has come here with any comments on the application. Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public meeting. Any discussion?
I think it's a great improvement. I think it's a really beautiful design. I think it'll, you know, help transform that portion of the block. And personally, I hope they do keep the doors open and play piano.
Any other comments? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
I move we accept the proposal.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Congrats, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks for coming in. You're going to take back your large piece of... It's good for workouts. Okay, the next item we have on the agenda tonight is Bacioli. Am I saying that correctly?
I just checked that myself. You are correct.
Oh, good, okay. Bacioli Restaurant and the proposed expansion. So if you can please identify yourself and take us through.
Hi, I'm Leonard Brandis from Brandis Architects, representing Bacioli and their proposed expansion into their next-door space. It was a former hair salon. It's now closed. It's a very small establishment, service establishment. You may notice that we have two applications because there are actually two changes of uses. We're going from a carryout restaurant, carryout establishment, to a restaurant. And we're going also from a service place to a restaurant. The units themselves are staying the same. We're not changing any change. There's no changes in the front facades that we're representing at this time. The only connection change that's going to happen between the existing pasta carryout restaurant is that we are going to be putting two openings in there to connect into the space. We're also going to be establishing in the basement additional storage space in the basement as well, so that we can have walk-in refrigerator and walk-in freezer and have more preparation area for the restaurant itself. The requirements that we're requesting is that, in terms of parking, the carryout restaurant itself does not require, in Bronxville code, any particular parking noted, but obviously there are employees and people working there on both floors. So obviously, there's some parking. That had to be established at some point, even though it's not, we have to list it as zero on our requirements here. So therefore, the required parking, which is, would be three spaces for our establishment for that area, is listed as zero, but we would need a referral or waiver from you for that parking. The two establishments together are just over 1,000 square feet on the first floor and the same on the basement level, well under the 3,500-square-foot requirement to be able to get a waiver from the planning board for the parking. So we are requesting that. Right now, if you go back to the, go to a site plan, it could show you that we have lots of parking all around us. The parking lots across the street, there's seven spaces in front of us. There's two loading zones on that particular block. We have listed all the times and preparation. We do plan on having garbage refuse, which is currently on the side of the Acme parking lot, which is also by the same owners of the property. And so we are going to continue that. We're putting larger containers for that, and that'll be private carting. That'll come in at least three times a week. If we need more, we'll add that. Most of the garbage will be taken out through the basement area, which leads right to the garbage areas. If you, when we go, when we go to the basement, you'll see that there's a car that takes you in the front of the building out to the garbage areas at the bottom of that sheet there. You can see that. So that's the common hallway for all those buildings across Cedar Street over there. And that common hallway takes us up to the staircase, right to the garbage and refuse areas. So we're not looking for any special space there. It's already existing spaces there.
And that's in the basement, right?
That's in the basement, yes. Because that's where most of the trash will be produced on. We're doing the preparation areas all in the basement area. The basic cooking is going to be the same cooking spaces that we had before. We're adding one more double stove under the existing hood that's there. We have plenty of room for it. So therefore, we're not really adding a lot in terms of employees. The basic pasta restaurant during the daytime is going to be used as it is now, almost as a carryout, because they will have still, people can still come in, buy the pastas, buy the sauces, and then they'll enter from there to go into the restaurant during their operation hours.
How does the truck get in to cart the trash away if there, there's like four parking spaces in front of it?
Right now, that's been, the way it's been established all this time. It's right there alongside, in the Acme parking garage. They come, yeah, they all come in at night during that time when everything's closed.
And there's no parking there at night?
No, that being exposed, so there's no cars should be there.
Okay.
Right now, we have, you know, between, and working in the pasta place, we have between three to five people working now during heavy times. And it would be, basically, be the same number of people in terms of employees. So we're not adding to the employee load in terms of what's going on in this space. And hours, we're looking for the restaurant to be open from 11 to 10. We're not looking for late-night space. We're not looking for music and singing going on there. And...
Could you take us through the seating plan? Because there are a lot of seats in a fairly small space. I just wanted to understand that.
Right, well, we, we worked out with banquettes mostly. We can go to the plan. Blow that up.
Uh-huh.
Right there.
Yep.
By having, on the, well, it'll be the right side, yeah. The banquet seating, basically, that gives us flexibility, because we do have people that come in, you know, couples come in all the time. We have the restaurant around the corner, obviously, Bacioli, and we know that people like to group. Sometimes it'll be two people, there'll be six people. This gives us the flexibility by having benches on both sides. And that's how we're getting the additional seating in there. We are also adding to accessible bathrooms in there as well, so that'll be use for our customers. So that'll be a nice feature to have in the village as well, something extra in the town.
I have a question. The seating, is it going to be, you go to the counter and get your food and go sit down? Or is it going to be...
No, waitress service.
So, so then my question is, if you have three to five people that service the takeout now, and you're going to add 30 seats, you're not going to add any employees?
No, it's, that's prep. The people in the, doing the prep area, that's what they're working, the three people right now mostly. And occasionally, if they have to have additional doing preparation area during the morning hours, they do the preparation hour. Now, we're going to have, all that prep is done already, and then they're going to have two people waiting at the tables with their plan.
So you have two people waiting...
Two to three people waiting at tables.
Thirty, thirty seats. Is that sort of standard? I don't know what standard is. Seems like it's, anyways, I'm just asking.
Yep.
Okay.
And we are hoping to be able to fill the restaurant, so. I mean, parking-wise, we do have lots of parking across the street, and we expect this to be mostly being used mostly in the evenings. Not, you know, we'll have some lunch, obviously, but it is mostly evening. There'll be plenty of open parking spaces, and we're hoping that even the 11, the tenant spaces that are there, they'll be using it as well, since we are a local restaurant, fairly well-established.
Will it be the same sort of menu as you have now?
Yes, looking at the same menu.
It's a pretty comprehensive menu.
Yes, we're not really adding the menu. We're just keeping still the pasta menu that we're talking about. We're not bringing from the other restaurant then.
So you're open for lunch and dinner?
Yes.
And 30 plus seats and an additional...
That includes the existing seats that we have already. We already have...
Three.
Three. Well, we had, those tables, we actually got down to twos, because those originally were fours. So they had 12 originally in the existing Bacioli. So now we're going to have only six in that area, and those will fill in the other side.
So the number could go up...
Thirty, it says thirty.
Thirty-three is, thirty-three is where we are maxing.
Up to 33 seats.
Up to 33 total.
Right.
Within twelve spaces.
I'm just talking about the net increment in potential occupancy.
Going from 12 to 33.
Right, and additional employees too, right?
Yes.
So you're going up 21 seats, and how many employees, three or four?
Basically, two or three employees, basically, is what we're looking at.
Okay, so 24 is roughly the maximum increase.
Right. The requirement for the village, for a restaurant, we meet that in the service. The service requirement for parking and the restaurant requirement for parking is the same, four spaces. So we're not really changing the required spaces in that part of the restaurant itself.
I didn't think there was a requirement, parking requirement for takeout.
There is none listed for takeout.
Right.
So it becomes zero, but we know there's people working and using that space. If it was a retail store, it would be three. If it was a service store, it would be three, according to your village code. So to have it as zero, it's just that, it's listed basically at the discretion of the planning board.
Well, we can waive the requirement in our...
Right.
Right.
Correct.
And you're also seeking a waiver for the survey, right?
Correct, because this is an interior alteration to start to bring a surveyor in. They asked us to bring a surveyor in to do all the parking lots and everything. It would be enormous expense. We're getting like $15,000 bill for that.
No, I'm familiar with that.
So I do have it on my site plan, though. I did a site plan, and we did put it to scale, and we did count all the spaces, so I did work it that way, too.
It's not like we're unfamiliar with the area there.
I know.
What is the occupancy? Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
What is the, what is the occupancy for the restaurant now as a whole?
What's the requirement?
The number, yeah, the number of people that are allowed maximum to be in the space.
I don't know how, I mean, the requirement in terms of parking, in terms of people.
In terms of people?
In terms of people, if you have over 50 people, you have to have two emergency exits. We're under the 50 people, so we don't need two, although we have two exits there. And we also have two exits in the basement as well, actually, four exits in the basement.
So the upstairs is the restaurant, and the downstairs is just considered storage?
Yes, storage and preparation.
Kevin, I'm also recalling a figure. It might have been 35 or something. When Taco Project was expanding, there was a ceiling on how many seats. Does this number 35 ring any bells, or...
They had 12.
Okay.
Right, they started at 12, but they had 35 seats.
They were 49.
Gotcha.
Right.
If, if it would be possible, if the owners are here, just having them talk a little bit about the operation would be great, yeah, and what you envision.
Yes, we opened about two years...
I'm sorry if you can give your name and all that good stuff.
Peter, Diana?
Yeah.
We opened up about two years ago. We had the intention of creating some organic pasta, good quality stuff that we can sell to everybody, and everybody seems to be loving it, loving what we do. The only thing is, the dilemma is that they want to come and sit, and right now, they can't. So when we saw this opportunity next door open up, we figured this is the time for us to, you know, make this business grow and do something nice for the town, for us, for everybody. That's why we're here, you know? We just want to make something nice happen there, which I think would be great for the town as well, and for the bottom line, so that we could survive and have a thriving business there, because right now, we're small, and we need to grow, to get to the next level.
Now, you also operate another restaurant in the village, correct?
I have two other restaurants in town. I have Bacio, and I'm partnered with Haiku.
Got it. Okay.
Our intentions are good. We want to do something nice.
Any questions while we have the owner up at the mic?
Is the landlord the same for all of those?
Those two, the depthness?
Just those two, or that whole strip?
I'm not sure about the whole strip, but maybe yes. You mean the length?
Yeah.
I think so.
So you'll just take over the lease for the...
Correct.
And the landlord said, okay, if you get approval from us?
Yes.
Sorry?
Apparently, the landlord is here.
She's supportive, she's supportive.
And she says it's okay, I think.
Yes.
Yes, Lozian was giving it up because they were having some difficulties, and at that time, and it was, Simeon and Peter had come to me and asked me if that was a possibility, and we, we door them, obviously, we're unbiased on them. So we said, of course. We go to the village, and if we get it, all in charge. So, if you approve.
So other questions, if not for the owner, then for the architect about the plans? If not, then why don't we go ahead and open up a public meeting, see if anyone has any comments from the public? Please, come on up. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public meeting and maybe have a little bit of discussion here. I think this is one of a number of situations we've seen lately where other services have been going toward either takeout or restaurant uses in town. That's where the demand has been. I think we've all been trying to wrestle with what is the right, you know, quantity of these, and, you know, whether or not it's the market that'll determine that, or whether we have some thoughts on it. So with that, please, whoever, whoever wants to speak up.
I like the idea of this restaurant expanding into the area next door. I would note that when we permit this and allow the change to the restaurant use, it's sort of, we then lose control over what kind of restaurant goes in. If you remember the bakery that we approved after giving them great scrutiny over their organic baking, and then they decided not to open, and we ended up with a very different bakery.
Yep.
So if we approve this, it's a restaurant space, full stop. So I like the idea of the proposed use. There are probably other uses that I'm not sure I would like, but I don't raise that as an objection, but I just note it as a caution to... But isn't this tied to what you produce on a daily basis for the walk-in traffic?
Yeah.
So it's, it's... I'm not sure I know what you mean. What I'm saying is if they decide that they want to go to Long Island and leave Bronxville, then, and another restaurant comes in...
And a Haiku two opens in the space, it's already permitted.
Right, oh, yeah.
That's the point.
All I'm saying is that a change in use is not a change to a specific user.
I believe that for the organic store, that you guys did put a specific role on it, that it had to be the same type of business that were into it, because of your position from the building inspector. So that was a little bit of a different situation? So if you want to keep it this type of, or, I believe, you're going to put that in your own?
Yeah, I'm not sure I have the expertise to pick a restaurant, but I just, yeah.
No, but it's a valuable heads-up that you're giving us.
Yeah, yeah. And the second thing is, we, I don't have a problem with doing away with, you know, waiving the required survey, because, you know, we know where it is, we know what it looks like, and they're not changing anything, so there's no additional information that we gain there. But I would note that we run people through the wringer on parking studies all the time, and this particular use is going to have a lot more people there. And if, so I think we ought to at least think about when we waive a parking study requirement, because, I mean, just to lay my cards out, we are required to have CLE continuing education requirements to be on the planning board, so that, you know, that's why we seem so knowledgeable, right? The one recent one that I did was on parking, and the person who taught it, who led the session, basically said, "Don't require additional parking. If you could put it someplace, it would be a mess." But we always go through the exercise. So I think if we decide to waive that requirement, we ought to be, ought to at least enunciate why we're doing it and when we might do it in the future and why we're doing it.
Is a parking, I know, for instance, when we just did the Bronxville Playroom, they had to do, I believe, a parking study, and that was a change of use. Is there a parking study attached to this particular change of use ordinarily? And are, would we be waiving that if...
I believe it is.
Yep.
Yeah, we're waiving what...
Right, so it's not just a waiver of the parking requirement, but also the parking
study?
Correct, correct. That's, that's what I'm saying.
I get it. And I think we'll need to talk about it, but I think we do recognize that in this portion of the village, it's hard to imagine where you would put additional parking, so that that can be part of dialogue. But the other thing I would note is that this isn't on park place, not to pick on park place, but we often, often do. Where park place is, I think, the epicenter of the mess that is parking in the, in the village, and at least this is a little bit off to the side.
Understood, yeah. I mean, I guess the, and I'm sorry to belabor this issue, because I don't think it's uniquely yours at all. It really is just something that we need to confront. If we're going to grant waivers of parking studies, as well as the parking requirement, we ought to have probably a more fulsome discussion at this point than this application would warrant by itself. I personally think our zoning code and how it relates to parking is, seems more appropriate for a Long Island suburb that has open space, and you put in a strip mall, and the question is, how much parking do you provide? Nobody's going to provide parking.
Urban areas, you know, are stripping away parking requirements. New York City has been removing its parking requirements from new residences. There's a trend, but of course, we have an existing code, and, you know, we're trying to figure that out.
Right, which we can waive, right? And the question is, you know, do we set a precedent, and then are we prepared to follow it? And I think it's an issue.
But doesn't, doesn't, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but in their calculations for existing parking calculations for personal service, the Blow &amp; Beyond had four spaces, and they're just taking over that space.
But they're changing from takeout...
I get that, I get that.
Yeah.
But there's still, but there were people that went into the...
Yes.
A lot of people that went in there.
Into what?
Into the haircut place.
Probably not enough, given that they're relinquishing their lease, so I suspect...
But there will be more sitting for a longer period here than probably...
I get that, I get that, but it did have, it was allotted for four spaces. That's all I want to point out.
Which is what's required by restaurant in the village under the same...
Right, I read the code, yeah, it's quite...
We are talking about a very small space. We're about 1,100 square feet on the total first floor that we're dealing with, including the kitchens and everything else. We're not talking about a major space here, and that's why the code allows you at, anything under 3,500 square feet, to allow you to give that waiver. Obviously, we're not making more land for parking. It's an existing, established, you know, town that has this, and we get a lot of walk-in customers. Obviously, people are walking around, and we always get walk-in, and people locally are always coming, and that's one of the great things about Bronxville. There's so many people that live in the village itself, they just walk, you know, park their cars, go home, and then walk to the restaurants.
And I guess...
That doesn't always happen. We would like that to be more of the case. As we know now, this is not a walking town. People like to park right in front of your place to go eat there. That's what they like to do. But, but I guess one of the points is, and I agree, this conversation is valid, is we are going to potentially 33 seats from currently, there's four, five, or six at most.
We have 12 there now.
In that little space?
That little space, that's what we have approved, is 12 seats.
But you don't have 12 seats, though.
Three tables of four.
Three tables of four.
Okay, well, I've been there a lot, okay. Man, we haven't looked that way.
That's what we have currently.
Okay.
Certainly, the hair salon had enough for at least 10 people in there as well, minimum, because of all the hair, you know, the equipment that they had and all the washing facilities they had. because of all the hair, you know, the equipment that they had, and all the washing facilities they had.
So you're looking, but you're looking at at least twenty more seats, then?
I think we're looking at another ten seats, if you look at, compare the two.
Thirty-three minus twelve.
Thirty minus twelve, plus what about the hair salon, that had ten?
We're just talking about the total number of people that would be in the restaurant as a whole.
Right.
You're seeing the thirty-three people, and you say you can have twelve now, sit down, we're not talking about takeout. People don't...
Sit down.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to get that, you know, so we, that's part of our, our thought process for the...
The hair salon, you're there for a half hour now.
Yeah, that's part of the process for the parking discussion.
Right.
Is how many people, you know, if it was a hundred people, just to give extreme example, but you're talking thirty-three minus twelve, that's what the additional potential, if it's full...
No, I'm talking thirty-three minus twelve from one side, thirty-three minus, and then an additional minus ten from the other side, from the hair salon people that we're using, there were people using the hair salon.
Yep.
So we're really talking probably more closer to another ten seats, not twenty-one seats.
Yep.
Can I, um, ask, just being relatively new to the planning board, um, what are the, I guess, the, what's the hardship, I guess, aside from time for getting a parking study completed?
It's, uh, fifteen grand.
It's pricey?
Yeah.
You pay for both, um, the parking consultant and the village's consultant to review it. So it can, it can add up.
And I think the related point is, I think we were all, you know, pretty cognizant of the parking situation in town, and so unless there's a solution that could come out the other side of this, then why make an applicant go through it if it's going to point out that we're short of parking, which we already know? I don't, if, you know, if, if we have a concern about the application, or if it's a major change in the population downtown, I think that will be more likely to call for it, but to put an applicant through something where at the end of the day, it may be likely we're going to waive it, or not waive it, regardless of what the study shows. I think that's the thing we struggle with in making applicants.
And, and they do make a good point, and we all know this, it's probably the best possible place to park is, is on that road, because you have the entire lot right there.
And, and you go down to the end of that road, and there's the train station.
And, and you have the places before in town where the post offices, so outside of, you know, Pondfield and, and Park Place, this is probably a pretty easy place to get a spot. And, and then I'm assuming that in that big lot, Acme closes at what, like eight or something like that? Do they change?
They're going to be open past your closing time.
Okay, I just look at that, that, okay, but a lot of people park there for the church, that's not going to be, they're not going to be doing that. So if it's more of a dinnertime crowd, I'm just thinking...
Acme's pretty empty at night.
Yeah, I don't, that, I go there to, you know, we all probably go there, because we've, we need something last minute to make a meal. I always get a spot in that, in that lot, personally. You know, in that six, seven o'clock timeframe.
Then the, the other question, I think, is, um, the applicant's here, and they don't have a parking study. So if we decided we should have one, we throw in another month at least. So the question is, when do we, like, ask, um, Kevin and Christina to force them to get a study before they come, and when do we allow them to come and ask not to have one? And so I think this is sort of a, and I'm sorry for, you know, I, I actually don't think the parking is much of an issue there.
It's going to help anybody, I don't think it's going to help anybody in that case.
Yeah, we, you know, because...
It would take a couple months, because to get a consultant to come in and do the study, and then they're going to say, well, we want it in the springtime, we don't want it in the wintertime. I'm going to lose five months by the time I'm done.
No, no, I, I, you know, yeah, I get it, I get it.
I mean, that's, when I have to do studies, I do prefer getting them when it's reality. And wintertime is not a reality when I do parking studies, I know that from other towns and I do work.
What do other towns do about the parking?
When it comes to existing, when it comes to existing spaces, like my office in Scarsdale, they don't even bother anymore. They say, you know what, you're in the village, no parking requirements. You can change it, you can make a change of use, they know there's no other place to put it, so they just say it's, it's good.
We're very much built up the same way as Scarsdale.
Yep.
Yeah, and, I mean, I, I guess I'm sort of using this to, um, maybe ask us... I'm sorry, what?
Ten years ago, they used to make you pay for a parking space.
Right, right.
But they changed it, because it's just ridiculous, even you pay, where are they, where are they putting people? With the extra money, it makes no sense.
Understood, I mean, I can see situations where there might be a uniquely intensive use that we might not want to approve because of the, um, what...
If, if a school came in, I mean, there, there are various uses that are all day and intense, you know?
Yeah.
Not transient.
Yeah.
You just have a point, you know, if you go to thirty-three minus whatever they have now, minus who was even minimally at the Blow Place, it's not a big number of people, and that's assuming it's going to be full all the time.
Right, it's not going to be.
It should only happen...
I hope it is, I hope it is. Anyways, I...
But we are a well-established restaurant, and we have a following in this town, so it's not like we're going to be in and out. This is a, a long-term process, we, we plan on being here for a long term.
And I guess I don't really...
I think that helps, being well-established.
Go ahead, Rich.
I, I don't really have a good sense for this yet, I'm new, obviously, but, um, how much of an issue do we have with dinner, evening time parking from the train station, too, which is a half a block away?
I mean, it, it feels like the middle of the day is the, in the afternoon is the peak.
Yeah.
Evenings are less intensive as a general, that's not a parking study, that's just someone who lives downtown, who, you know, gets to...
We don't have a study on that specifically.
There have been studies, there was just a study done for the children's playroom, and it, uh, I believe showed all the different hours, but I think, you know, the afternoon is, yeah.
We have a parking problem in the town.
Yeah.
I think that's what all of them say.
And I don't think this applicant's going to solve that.
Nope, and we can't solve that.
Exactly.
And the study's not going to solve that.
I have a quick question.
Please go.
If we're finished with parking.
Yes, we'll never be finished with parking, but try.
Is there going to be a liquor license?
Uh, yes, there will.
Pardon?
Wine, wine and beer, basically, is what we'll, not hard liquor.
Then nobody will drive, then, they'll, they'll take Ubers.
You must live in a different village tonight.
No old fashioned.
Is there a liquor license now, for what it's...
No, there is no liquor license now.
Okay.
In terms of the conversion, what, what time do you anticipate to bring this about? And then, um, are you keeping the current takeout footprint in place while you do the construction? What is the vision?
The current takeout will be open throughout the whole time, we're only making two openings between the two establishments, so there's not really any damage, we're adding one, uh, burn, you know, a set of burners underneath the existing hood. So the, the pasta place will remain fully open during the whole time.
And how long do you think this will take?
Uh, normally something like this takes about four months to four to five months.
Okay, because your client's going to hold you to that.
We have all the kitchen stuff, but we have to get all the underside stuff, we have to rip out things, put in bathrooms. So it's not going to happen in a week.
And there are backlogs on it.
But we are prepared, once we get approval, I'll be ready by Friday to submit plans for permits. So we're ready to, we are ready to move this along.
I would just say, just as a user, I love your pasta, your gnocchis, the black linguine squidding is...
Can you use them in an advertisement?
No, it's ridiculous, but the gnocchi, it's, it's outstanding, it's an outstanding product, my kids, I, I see you all the time, you always text me when it's, I used to ask, like, when is the black, black squidding going to come out? I think it's Fridays or something, no, so I think as a, you know, as a user, I, I, I will come.
The most important question, are there going to be lunchtime specials for the kids?
Though they have, the kids go there, the kids go there now, they have a great, yeah, the great, great setup.
It's a real boon for the town.
A little cup of gnocchi, is that...
No, it's like a pie, it's like six bucks or something, pasta with sauce, or seven, I don't know what it was now, but, it used to be six bucks a long time ago. Yeah. And people get to get it, and they just take it back, and, you know, like they do everything.
Love it.
I feel the same way Albert does about the pesto.
Yeah.
Pesto's magic, yeah.
Really good.
I love it, yeah.
Those will still be sit-down in the carryout, but they're only going to be six tables, six chairs instead of twelve.
And, uh, circle is in that top part above the three tables, is that...
That will be, that'll be some seating, there'll be some seating. Yeah.
I just had, what, there was one comment from, um, Kev, you might know this from, um, the consultant, from our consultant, it was number four, it appears that existing stairwell, which is on the plans, you're going to take, it's right there, you're going to, you're going to make that a bathroom, so you're going to close that up.
We are closing one of the stairs.
I think there was, there was concerns about in the basement, don't you have...
He didn't realize that we had doors going out the front, he didn't, there's two exits, if you look at the basement plan.
There is two exits, okay, good.
It's on the plan there, you can show that if you want.
And the consultant also asked, how many garbage containers will there be? It was unclear whether there were two or three.
I believe listed two, uh, three odd containers, it's, it's on the plan there.
Okay. Are those shared with the other residents? Oh, no, you have your own dedicated ones.
This is commercial, this is, you know, AAA carding takes that, that's a commercial.
You, you have to have a container and a contract, gotcha, okay, thank you. Okay.
No.
Tom, you had something?
What's the requirement for restrooms?
Uh, if you have...
You're putting two in, but...
I am putting two accessible bathrooms, because, well, it's, New York State Code requires one accessible bathroom, uh, and one regularly have to have two bathrooms, by code, when you have liquor of any sort, wine or beer or anything. Uh, the health department requires two accessible bathrooms, you know, one for each sex, so that's why we have two.
I think Scalini's, I think, only has one.
It's probably pre-existing the codes, anything that was pre-existing codes, they can maintain. Once you make a change of use, uh, you must meet the new codes.
You guys do, right?
And once again, this is because it, uh, the Westchester Health Department requires a separate male and female when you have alcohol.
Yep.
And they both have to be accessible.
Okay, any more discussion here among the, among the board?
Uh, no, I mean, uh, I'm happy to move forward this and grant the two waivers, I just, uh, um, do worry about how we enunciate the contours of what we're doing in terms of providing the waiver, given that we're setting a bit of a precedent.
Yeah, and I think we've, uh, we've done that before, I'm thinking of the Taco Project, which is a very similar conversion of a takeout space into a restaurant space, and I don't believe that we had them do a parking study, study in connection with that. Okay.
There wasn't.
Yeah.
And when do we ask them to do a parking study in advance, and when do we allow them to come and ask for a waiver?
So it's up to the applicant?
So anybody can come in and ask for a waiver.
Anything over thirty-five hundred square feet does require the parking study.
Yeah, thirty-five hundred, you have no choice.
Right. That does require, this is well under, we're, we're twenty-two hundred total upstairs and downstairs together, so we're way under that requirement.
I guess maybe we need to talk to the village trustees about the whole parking situation, and, and what the burdens they're putting on us, because in the codes, it says we're supposed to ask for them and have these permits, but we know that there's no extra parking.
Right, and when we had...
Well, we've, we've been having some communication with Jim Palmer, just to...
Okay.
Get our oar in, and we'll be following up on that.
I think Jim is correct, that, but there, our hands are tied that we can't make more spaces, and it's unfair to...
Right.
To tell people no, because we're, there's too many spots already, that's not fair either.
Right, and when we do, uh, have uses that come into the village that take away parking, we haven't done a parking study.
Yep.
The on-street dining wasn't, you know, admittedly, it was a special case, because it was COVID, and, you know, blah, 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 but, um, the whole parking, um, aspect of our responsibility seems, um, uh, I don't want to use the word pointless, but it's close enough.
Yep.
Wouldn't you say that they're working on it, um, is that a consultant that's been hired by the town that's kind of working on it?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I think Jim Palmer would like to have a parking study in the whole village, so they have a better idea. It's not been approved or just a thought.
Right, if you look at the last comprehensive plan, it does sort of talk about what's available and how it has grown ever so slightly over time, and it really brings home that, um, the planning board isn't going to, um, be able to...
We're not going to be the ones to solve it.
Right, exactly. Well, I, it's...
So with that, um, would someone like to go ahead and make a motion, I think we've talked it out?
Yeah, I move that we accept the application as submitted and grant the waiver for the, um, uh, survey, uh, grant the required, uh, waiver to the requirement of a survey, and grant a waiver to the requirement of the parking study and the provision of additional parking.
That's kind of double waiver, but I'm following you.
Yeah.
Is there a second? Any other discussion before we vote? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, thank you, we're looking forward to...
Have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Okay, good, our next meeting will be in March, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.